Let's get started. Welcome, everyone. We'll call it to order at 7:02. We have some additions and corrections to the agenda that have been brought to my attention. One is a legal executive session in addition to the contractual executive session. And the other is you wanted to add something under new business about professional development, right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
Just looking for an agenda. Not paper, actually paper.
You want mine?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. Don't think we have any members of the public. Does anyone have any correspondence? No? All right, moving right along. Bob, do you have anything for us?
Oh, I do.
All right.
Update on school. Update on my.
Yeah. Score of the soccer game?
I lost Tuesday. It's in here. It's in here.
Thank you.
So this is a bunch of stuff. None of all of this is relevant. Some of this is under the new business category, so I'll just go over what is not. So school started. Buses arrived, kids get off, they went to rooms. Pretty smooth start, I think. And we had, so seventh graders came the first day alone and did an orientation exercise with the seventh grade team. It was pretty impressive, I think. They kind of got the hang of the building today by themselves. I think it's a really valuable thing to continue doing. We had the families in last week for an orientation, for them to have the opportunity to meet the team and ask some questions after school started and do some community building and learn a little bit about some of the programming that's available. So that was a positive thing, I think. Things seem to go smoothly. The big news, which is all over Facebook and our website now, and I tweeted it, and I don't know how many Twitter followers I have in the valley, it might be like one. But whoever that one person is, they got my tweet, that yesterday's Washington Post had the story, I told you guys about this, was going to be coming up. Twenty schools nationwide won the Schools of Opportunity Awards. Eight, I believe, were gold winners, and that included us. And in your package is the article from the Post. It's on our, we put it out on our Facebook page, we had a picture of a group of students holding the banner they sent us. And we've had like 3,300 views on that post. And on the Washington Post article, we shared that one as well, and we've had 1,500 or so views on that one. So the word is spreading like wildfire about this award. We didn't get a chance to really present it to the students, other than the group that held the thing, because Monday we did a September 11th remembrance ceremony for the 15th anniversary. So we didn't want to have that solemn moment all of a sudden unfurled banner, be like, congratulations. So we figured we would save that till next week. And of course, if any of you guys would like to come and attend and be there for that, that'd be fantastic, just to observe. 9:30 assembly, 9:35, Monday morning assembly, something like that, 9:30-ish is my guess. I can send an email to you guys to give you the time. I believe we're going to have Steven Morrison come in as well, who would like to be a part of that. So that's a positive. Another new element, I was invited to join the Elks Club Student of the Month program, which I think we had been, I think when Ross Daley was here, members of that Student of the Month program, and it has been a while since that's continued. So we're going to restart that, which gives us a connection with the community group, and it gives us a way to honor kids for work they do. They're very particular about what they're looking for for their winners. They're not looking for who scored the most goals or who's got the highest SAT scores. They're looking for kids who really showcase their kindness, showcase their moral convictions, kids who are just good, upright kids who kind of do the right thing. And, you know, and shine in other ways, not the traditional ways of getting attention. So that's kind of their target audience, which I think is a fantastic target audience, because those are the kids that typically go under appreciated. So we're going to join that program as well. Bill and I met with Jamaica contingent as part of our opening salvo of the listening tour, and got some really good input from those folks. I think it was a very positive, I mean, there was some negative stuff that they brought up, but we had some, I think overall the feel that it was very positive, and came away with some good ideas, thoughts on how to kind of reconnect with some folks. I've had an email exchange and a phone call exchange with Craig Hunt in town, set up a meeting with the select board there, and we'll continue to kind of grow our listening tour into the other communities as well. So it's just slow-going at first, but still moving. And I think that's basically the report itself. There's some other attachments that are related to the new business. I think those are all new business. So I think we can come back to what the rest of those attachments are later on. Does anybody have questions?
Thank you. Great, thank you. I did send out the superintendent's report. If anyone has questions, or Bill, if you want to highlight something you definitely want to...
Just that I think we had a really good opening with the entire staff. Everybody gathered at the Dutton Gym, and it was a very positive experience for, I think, the teachers. We ended it with a really nice video that was created by Matt Martin, graduate of Leland and Gray, that simply asked students, what did they want their teachers to know? And it was about an eight-and-a-half-minute video of students just answering that question, which I thought was very heartfelt and authentic to send all of us off into the beginning of school. Things are rolling right along.
Very good. Bob?
I'm sorry, that was two things, I forgot.
Okay.
That I had written notes on the paper, but I was looking at the wrong paper. So on behalf of the staff, I just wanted to say thank you for breakfast. The staff is very appreciative of that, and I think, you know, having been a staff member here before, it just sends a really great message around the support that the folks here have, and it's a pretty wonderful staff. So I just want to say thank you on their behalf for that. And the second piece, Joe and I have had a couple of conversations. I don't think it's new business per se, but I'm not sure where it stands. So I've had some questions early on in my time here about the community service requirements. And the best that I can understand is that there was some discussion at the student council level at one point, there was some discussion at board level at some point, a letter went home to starting freshman last year, the class of 2020, because I was a parent of one of those, so I got one, that informed me that my child was going to have to get community service hours in order to graduate. And then from there, there wasn't really any implementation. We have no forms to track it, we have no one in charge of overseeing it, we have no mechanisms really in place to do it. We also tried to let Joe see if we could find somewhere in the records of where there was an official vote or a policy around approving it. There didn't seem to be anything. So I don't know, there's a lot of interest in moving it forward. There's probably 25% of the parents in high school who think it's already in place. So I'm just, I would like to continue with that, but I've been looking for, graduation requirements are supposed to be set by boards. So I'm looking for something from you guys that would sort of authorize me to go ahead and continue the rollout of that, which I think you guys were in favor of initially, but I could be wrong on that end.
Well, I went back and did the research to try and find anything where we said that there was any kind of a vote or a motion or anything. And the only thing I can find is that we actually discussed, as part of the implementation of the flexible pathways, there would be a community service requirement for graduation. So we've never had an official policy change or vote to actually require that or anything, but it was going to be implemented as part of something that we were doing anyway. So, you know, when Bob first asked me about this, I'm like, well, yeah, it's there, it was part of this whole bigger thing. This is, you know, almost like a housekeeping matter. I mean, you know, we sent out the letter, I think we probably just didn't do a very good job of formalizing something that we had decided was a good idea.
And this, and that class, the class of 2020, the current sophomores, that's the class, the first class for which the proficiency-based graduation requirements are supposed to be in place for. And boards are required to have policies around determining what is proficiency, in what areas, and how do you measure it, so on and so forth. That's one policy we don't have at this time. Don't be afraid, I think a lot of schools don't have that in place yet. There's a ton of work, which this will come up later, another point I want to make, that needs to get done within the school to determine, for us to give you guys some suggestions on what that should look like, and then we'll pass a policy, I think, at that point, which we'll sort of formalize it. If we want to wait to roll the community service element into that policy, and you guys just, we're all on the same page, I'm just going to kind of start doing it, and then when we get to the point of writing that policy, rolling it out, that it'll just be part of it, I'm fine with that approach. If you guys want to take a formal vote to say, yes, we want that to be part of whatever requirements you have, and then I can go off that positive vote to do the implementation, whatever is really your pleasure on that.
Emily? One second. Emily, and then you. So I don't, I'm not as concerned that we have a vote, because I think that it's well within your prerogative to implement a program like that. And we've been talking about it at this board for quite a long time, sort of here and there as a service, but I think there's always been support, even as board members have changed, to move forward with some sort of community service thing. We were aware that Bratton Bro was doing one and had been doing it successfully for some time. I just wanted to mention very briefly that I had heard just within the last week, in one of my many long drives on the road, on the radio, a tail end of some study or something that said that the community service requirements in high schools was not giving the same results that they had expected, and that students were not more engaged citizens and more likely to volunteer and vote. I think it had something to do with voting in the future. So while I am always in favor of this, I have been conceptually for a really long time, I really want it to be meaningful for our students and to have them engaged in. And if I can, just one more quick thing. I was at a meeting last night where I know there's a legislator who's going to be introducing some more legislation that has been introduced for a number of years from Wyndham County, Jeanette White, Senator Jeanette White, around student-free speech. And I don't know if you've heard anything about that, and I can't really give you it. She's going to send me the stuff that she's introduced. It's not been introduced since I've been up there. But I thought that was really intriguing as well, and it talks more about empowering students and their voice and the things that they do. And I thought it was quite interesting and intriguing, and I thought, I don't know, I know there's been pushback whenever she's offered this before because of liability and all that, when students are making final decision around what they produce in documents that they, you know, the yearbook and whatever they may produce can create concern. But I think we need to trust our students and our schools to do the right thing. And so I just thought that was kind of interesting, and I don't know whether it could play into this whole thing, but I think it's your place to move that forward.
I think the student voice, because I was just telling the student council yesterday, two days ago.
Yes, thanks.
And we were talking about trying to empower them to do more, make them be more involved in pushing decisions about how the school is run, and I'm just a firm believer in empowering kids, I've been since I was a teacher. So I think that's something that this will grow in this culture. As far as the effectiveness, I guess it depends on what metrics you're using to measure, of course.
Absolutely.
I could tell you that we, at Springfield, we had it, and, you know, it was a 40-hour requirement, it was very strict around, it had to be nonprofits, you couldn't just go shovel someone's driveway, it had to be like a licensed nonprofit, we chased down all the results and everything else. And we found that the average kid was doing way more than 40.
Wow, that's great.
Oh, yeah, we had kids that were doing three or 400 hours. And it might be that they were doing it anyways, but now we're tracking it, it gave us data. But I can remember standing at graduation with one class in particular that had given like over 3,000 hours to the community.
That's fantastic.
And that is one class. So, I mean, I think there's some pretty powerful data to support that they do get engaged, you know. So it depends on how you do it and what it looks like, of course, but...
Howie? Nothing is free. Who administers this program, and who keeps track of it, and do we have a teacher in charge of it, do we have an aide? I'd like to see the numbers on what it's going to cost us and how we're going to implement it.
Yep. I think, I mean, I think because of the size of school here, I think it's pretty, it's well, and right now only two grades will be doing this, so there's 100 kids involved. It's pretty easy to manage at the early stages. As it grows each year with more classes doing it, we would have to consider how to do that. I think, you know, you can do it a variety of ways. I think at Springfield, we had a small stipend that went to someone who supervised it, and we gave them a couple, maybe 2,000 bucks or something like that, and they oversaw the entire thing. They set up the relationships with the agencies, they posted the openings, they tracked it, they worked with the council office to make sure kids had it when they entered their senior year. We had checks in place to, you know, if you didn't have a certain number of hours, you couldn't get, by the time you were senior, you couldn't get senior privileges, you couldn't go to the prom. There was things, benchmarks you had to hit along the way, and that person oversaw, making sure that they all got there. So, yeah, there might be a small cost at some point, but I think initially, there's probably someplace I can assign that to in our current setup without having a cost.
See, I could say that a $2,000 stipend for that kind of work sounds pretty reasonable. I think if you really do want to have a good program, somebody really needs to own it. So it'd be great to see my on in the budget for the next budget.
Yep, agreed. And I think what I would do, based on what I'm hearing now, is I would bring back, and we'll, maybe the student council, I will work up some draft that we're going to bring to you guys, just to say, this is what we're going to, here's the steps, here's what we're going to do maybe by the next meeting, and then roll it out after you guys have kind of seen what it looks like, if that makes sense.
Would that be in conjunction with the graduation requirement policy as well?
That one's going to take a little more time, because this, well, that's on the agenda under the professional development.
Okay.
So I want to talk to you a little bit about that later.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not that simple.
All right. Thanks. Bill, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to remind you about our...
It just like went away from me.
Our strategic plan will be reviewed at our retreat for the WCSU, and you'll receive an email, if you haven't already, from Meg looking for confirmation. We'd love to have you all there. You can buy your neighbor a cocktail, you can have good conversation. We have some really good stuff on the agenda. It's going to be a great night, so we'd really like to see you there. I know that my good friend Joe sent you out another copy digitally of what was sent out this summer. I have hard copies, if you'd like them as well, so you can do some pre-thinking, make our time together valuable, just kind of looking at, you know, getting a chance to refresh with a new superintendent, a new director of curriculum, a new high school principal, just kind of look at our main goals and our strategic plan, make sure those are the foundations you want us to build off of. So I would really encourage you to come on 28th, 5 o'clock, Mount Snow.
Crocktails.
Cocktails.
Dinner. Don't forget dinner.
Dinner, cocktails. I mean, the vegetarian ordered two high-quality choices.
Will it be dancing to Bill or no?
They won't be vegetarian. Salmon and something else. They sounded good.
Are we inviting administration to that as well?
The administration is all invited. I've got 28 commitments already. It's going to be awesome.
I think I've replied, I'm coming. I have to go off another meeting for it, but I'm doing it.
Thank you.
I got someone to step in.
That's my big push.
I'm going to. Meg has bugged me.
Oh, good.
So I think you still have time, I think you still have time if you want. I'm sure you can actually even get in late, just email Meg and let her know you're coming.
Yes, oh, yeah. It's the place to be.
She was pretty proactive about getting those emails out, though.
She's very proactive.
Two or four of them, right?
Yeah. It's usually a good time. All right. Anything else? No?
I'm good, man.
Okay. Do we have something from Lori, the business manager?
You do not have something from Lori.
We do not have anything from Lori?
You'll get quarterly reports from her.
Okay.
Unless you guys want something different.
I think quarterly's probably okay, unless there's something we need to be, you know...
Yeah, anything comes up timely, we'll absolutely let you have it.
Okay. All right. So the last time we had a, Bill talked about the status of the funding for the 21C program, that, you know, we had been unable to get a grant to cover it, and that there were several different options, there was a handout, and we talked a little bit about it, and, you know, kind of agreed that it was a valuable program, but it's back on the agenda tonight for actual, you know, further discussion and some sort of an action as to what we're actually going to direct, to be put into the budget plan for the next fiscal year in terms of funding the 21C program. So I know the option that seemed the most reasonable was the one where we spread the expenses out over the, over, it was option two, where we spread the expenses out over two years and spent some money, and spent some, we spent a little money there looking to find some more money, but, you know, that seems to make the most sense. I don't know what everybody else thinks. That was what you were sort of recommending, was it?
Well, I just, I haven't been able to confirm with all the other participants with you, so if you don't, if you want to have that information at your next meeting about where everybody stands, I will have that. I have a good guidance from you, but you guys can tell me what you want to do now.
Okay. I suppose we ought to wait and see what everybody else is going to do, but I think, you know, we could certainly give you a sense of where we...
Yeah, sense would be helpful, because when I ask other people, they want to know what is Leland and Gray's sense.
All right, guys, what does Leland and Gray think?
Well, has anybody had a profound change of heart since the last time we had this conversation? I mean, what, beyond the fact that we wanted to know what everybody else was doing, I think that was our opinion last time, so...
I mean, everybody seems to be in the same general mood of, we value this program.
Right.
We want to spread out the money to make it as small as possible over time, and we want to, you know, continue our investment in our students, in this manner.
So does that sort of...
I'm a big supporter.
Just a second. Yep. Does that give you what you need to go forward with the other boards?
It's not a formal vote or anything.
No, it's not a formal vote.
It just gives guidance to Bob and I.
But it would be shocking if at the next meeting we said, you know what, we've decided, no, we're not going to fund this anymore, we need that money somewhere else.
Yes, that would be shocking.
You know, that would be shocking and probably just making as well. So, okay, so we can push that vote until next meeting and see what everybody else is doing and line ourselves up with them?
Sure.
Anybody online know what's going on with the Jamaica vote tonight?
Yep.
Was that enough?
I don't know.
I don't know, I just asked Karen.
I don't know what's required to overturn that.
102 in favor and 106 opposed?
126.
126, I'm sorry.
What's required to overturn that vote? What percentage? It's not a simple majority.
It needed to be 52 votes, but it...
No, it's just, it just asked, it's a simple majority, you had to have enough people.
Enough people vote.
Yeah, this is enough. So this changes the result. Now they're staying in Leland and Gray, but again, a fairly low voter turnout.
102 to 136.
That's more than I've seen for anything.
Right, it's more than...
Like twice as much.
There's like 600 voters, right? And they got 226.
That's more than I've seen for anything ever.
Wow.
Other than maybe some budget votes at Leland and Gray when we had a town meeting type thing, then I can remember the whole auditorium being packed.
Yeah. I remember those.
Me too.
We're adjusting.
Oh, thanks, God.
All right. So, thanks, Drew. Next was just Act 46 Study Committee Report. We have several members, several board members are actually community members on the Act 46 Study Committee. I got myself elected chair of that one.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Emily.
You're welcome.
So I figured, no, really, thank you. I figured I would let you know, we've met once, we've agreed that we're going to have John Everett as the consultant, he is the consultant to the other side, the Dover, Wardsboro...
Marborough.
Marborough, thank you. Merger talks, so, you know, he's working with both sides of this. He's worked with the WCSU before, he was the consultant a few years ago when we did the RED committee study. So he's familiar with the players, the landscape, you know, all of that. We've just had one meeting, and there's another meeting actually Thursday. There's an agenda posted, you know, people are basically coming with questions, and we're starting to talk about what this thing could look like going forward, but there's not a lot of, you know, there's still a lot of things to figure out. You know, part of the work of the committee still, at this point, is figuring out what exactly we want to know so that we can make a good decision. And, you know, a lot of that work's being done. There are some draft questions. It's all posted on an Act 46 link off the WCSU website.
Off the homepage.
Right off the homepage. I would encourage anybody to go there, take a look at the documentation, email questions, comments, and call somebody who's on the committee, and, you know, get the input, come to the meeting, and let yourself be heard. Anybody else who's on the committee want to add something? Patty, please.
Oh, no, I'm just on the committee.
No, no, no. Anybody else want to add something I missed or, you know, highlight something? I know, because Drew, Emily, Patty, Kelly, we're all on the committee, so... All right. Well, that'll be rolling along. By the next time we meet, the Act 46 Study Committee will have met two more times. Oh, shoot, I forgot to put this on the additions to the thing. I just wanted to ask quick where the other boards were with appointing people to the negotiations committee?
Pretty close.
Okay.
Yeah. I've got one more board to go.
Okay. So we'll hear more about that at the next meeting, too.
The meeting before that? October 12th for the negotiations committee. Could be a wonderful date.
Okay.
All right. Because it's in between your two meetings on the 5th and the 19th, so Wednesday. If you want, I could give you the board just a little update of the other study committee, since no one serves on that.
Oh.
If that would be helpful.
I think that'd be great.
Thank you. So they've had three meetings. They started a little bit earlier, but they don't have the work of the RED that they have for their context either. They did make a big decision last week that they are going to just study a K through 6. So if Marborough is a K through 8, and Dover and Wardsboro are both K through 6. So Wardsboro is also studying on their own an alternative structure if the K through 6 does not provide the opportunities that they're looking for for their students, but they recognize that the work of the committee could be much more efficient and better for all of the communities if they focused.
You mean Marborough?
Marborough, I'm sorry.
Not Wardsboro.
Marborough. And Vernon is sending regular representatives to the meetings, because they are also a K-6 school, and they have to wait for the outcome of a vote that occurs on Election Day in November to see if they will be outside of a newly-formed school district, which would make up all the remaining members of... make up all the remaining members of WSESU.
Have they confirmed that day of that vote yet?
They're doing the vote on Election Day.
I heard that wasn't confirmed yet, because of.
That was the last.
So, pushback and concern about it.
I heard there was concern, but yes, that that is the warned day.
Okay.
Yeah. That's kinda where they're at, but I'll always do that. I'll just always give you guys an update. And I would really encourage you to, again, when you check on the WCSU site, they have all the same equivalent information for that study committee. Everything is videotaped. It's really very illuminating, so.
Yeah, you can watch these babies on TV if you want.
Yes, I would love to just say, and I told Rich this as well, cause he's chair of that. I, I don't have, literally, I'm sure none of you have time to watch all of these meetings that we can't go to, but I did go into theirs, which was on the 25th of August, I think, where the three principals shared their, their perspective of their schools. I think I mentioned to you too, Joe.
I actually listened to them in the background on the computer.
I was so impressed by that. I thought that was really fantastic and maybe something we should consider at our own, I learned so much, and I've been in this SU for 22 years.
Yeah.
And I learned so much about just one of those schools and, and I, I saw so much to celebrate in every one of those schools. And I just thought that was a really powerful process that they went through. So, if anybody has a chance to look at that one on, on August 25th, it was really, it was at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
And it was really interesting. It was, it was, a couple of them did PowerPoints and it, it was just really, you could see the distinct differences in cultures, but the commitment to kids and all that. I thought it was really good, so.
Yeah, really, it is, it is worth, I, I put it on the background on the computer and listened to it, and you don't even have to watch. You can hear it. And it, it's about 45 minutes worth of presentations from the principals. I do know that for our next Act 46 meeting, the consultant is actually meeting with the administrators of all the, all the schools in our group to get that same sort of feedback.
That'd be great.
But that is something that the Act 46 committee could do, is, is ask for those presentations as well.
Don't care what comes from it, it was good.
Yeah, it was, it was very interesting. I, I agree, you should, if you have 45 minutes, you should watch it.
And some of the other, like I've, I said I've been watching the Brattleboro, them going through now their agreement and stuff. And it's very interesting what they've put in their agreement and little creative ways they've dealt with things and what, things that were thought not to be possible actually legally out of possible and things like that. So, that might give us some ideas about somebody who's already done that kind of work.
And I, I would say that I think this board was very much in favor of seeing if the possibility of having the consultant work on both sides. It's already playing a lot of dividends because a lot of the research that is being done for either your participation study committee or theirs just starts informing things. Kinda goes to what you're talking about Patty, because you investigate different articles of agreement and you investigate how different groups have overcome different things and then you can share that out.
And expands the thinking.
It does. The thinking expands.
Oh, we never would've thought of doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's really good.
It is valuable. All right, moving right along, we have the West River Thrives Memorandum of Understanding.
There's actually two.
I saw that, I wondered if I had two copies.
Yep, now in your packet, there are two. And there's like the reach, one page from back. And, so this, and then there's a third document as well. So, the, obviously, we talked about this early on, the SAP position losses funding. And, you know, when we, I think it was my first meeting with you guys, we talked about the idea of just maybe just kinda see how things unfold and see what our internal capacity really is. And so, actually, Bill and I had met with the folks from West River, West River Valley Thrives pretty early on in the summer to kinda learn a little bit about what, for us to learn a little bit about what they do and how their, their services relate specifically to Leland and Gray. And one of the things that was fairly obvious, like Bill suggested, that there was, that we had an empty office where the SAP used to be. They pay money to be in an office and we have an office. So, the first MOU is really about us allowing them to, I think that's the first one.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the first one. To provide some level of, of, is it the first one? Yes. Some level of service that they're gonna provide for us basically in exchange for having some space in our building. And there's a, an MOU that we, that they drafted for us to, with some stipulations that we asked them to put in, that governed how that will work around their access of our kids, their use of our, of our phone and internet and, and the physical space as well. So, that's what the first one is. And I just wanted to give you guys, I mean, there's no, this is not a, there's no cost to us for this. It's really a, it's exchange of goods and services. It seems mutually beneficial to both parties. We gain some services that help make up what the SAP used to do. They gain a free space to live in. So, that's the first MOU. The second MOU came out of their desire to continue having an SAP and for all the right reasons, of course, and, and, and having me not discourage them, but try to talk about the idea that, look, we're in a tough spot financially. I've asked the board to kinda hold off on making decisions about this and, and, you know, further going into deficit spending. And so, they came up with this proposal whereby they, acting as an agent for youth services, can access some funding to basically hire an SAP at halftime, 20 hours a week, that doesn't cost us anything. The, the person would be an employee of theirs. They would use the same space that West River Thrives is using and they would provide some additional services that they weren't initially providing as a result of the original MOU. So, they're sort of expanding each time with more and more services for our kids at no cost to us. So, this one is being funded by, through the Youth Services Grant. Now, they are very clearly stating in this that this is really a one-year Band-Aid and that they're hoping that we will reconsider our, our approach to, to funding the position in the future, but for the meantime, this is what they're willing to do to try to help us out and then obviously support our kids. So, that's the second MOU. And then as a, the third piece is really the job description that's been drafted that they would use to hire that person. So, the person would not be an employee of the, of the district, they would be an employee of West River Valley Thrives. So, that's, so those are the, the two MOUs and the job description. And basically what I said then is, look, the board has had some discussion about this prior to my arrival. If, we've had some discussion when I first got here, and I'm not comfortable signing any MOUs around any of this until I've made sure that people are all on the same page. I don't want board members to feel like I told you at one time that I'm not gonna fill this. I don't want you to spend money on, and all of a sudden like, hey, there's a, hey, just heard there's a part-time SAP at the high school and have you guys confused about what that was, or even upset about, around what that was. I want before, on, above board transparent around it. But that's, that's the purpose and technically don't, I mean, I can enter into contracts and MOUs as a principal, but I wanted to make sure you guys are on board with the concept before I went ahead and signed anything. So, I wanted to share with you those documents and pick your brains a little bit and see where we're at.
Okay. Thanks. I think that's a really creative solution to a problem. I congratulate you.
Albeit temporary.
Temporary, but, you know, and it may lead to something else after a year. We never know.
I'm always concerned when we bring in outside folks that don't report to you. Is there an understanding that you have, this person reports to you and in case there's a problem, you will be able to resolve it? And in case this person doesn't work out, you will be able to say, sorry, this person doesn't, isn't working out in this position? Cause I've seen, you know, we've had, we've had this going, you know, anti-drug programs have been around for 50 years in high schools and I've not noticed any effect at all.
Yeah, so I haven't even gotten into the, the effectiveness part of this conversation at all, if that's not where I've even gone.
Well, it's important for the.
Oh, yeah.
Next year, so this is a good chance to, you know, put the best foot forward and show us that if we don't, you have to look, you know, be right on top to make sure it's working. And it has to be clear that this person reports to you. I don't want a person in the school who's answering to somebody someplace else.
Right. So, there's two parts to that. I mean, I would say the first part as far as having outside employees in the building, there's lots of, never mind the reporting piece, there's all sorts of other potential problems that come up with that. But part of the MOU is that they're gonna have to go through the, the process of being fingerprinted and background checked and all that kind of stuff to make sure that there's no safety concerns. So, that's, that's a no-brainer for us and what we would expect to have in a MOU. Because they are the, the funding agency and because they are the group that's hiring this person, they, they have, they really have supervision of the person. However, there's an element in the MOU right above the signature line which talks about how that person's basically gonna work with our, our Director of Student Services each week and they're also getting clinical supervision through outside, professional clinician. And, and in the job description, it talks again about reporting to the program director slash Director of Student Services. So, it's kind of a joint oversight. It's not as clean as what you're describing and I understand that, but, you know, sometimes there's an element of beggars can't be choosers that we have to kinda live with and flex with. I'm not super concerned about that element of it. I think we'll, we'll see how that goes. Because it's only a one-year thing, if it doesn't work and that, that relationship is a challenging one, they're not doing it again anyway. So, you know what I mean? If, if we end up funding this position and we decide that's something we wanna move forward with in the future, then we'd be hiring them ourselves. So, it's just a sort of a Band-Aid solution, I think, is really the best way to describe it.
Yeah, I think from the first document, there's reference to ATI group or that's not.
That is the, above the influence group. It's a, to be honest, I'm not, I can't fully explain. It's a student organization around.
Prevention group.
Prevention group, yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanna make one comment. Something you said, you said that you didn't want us to have this coming up without us knowing about it, because you had stated that you didn't support moving forward. I just wanted to clarify that my understanding of our conversation we had previously was that you weren't ready to support doing something until you looked into it. So, it was never.
Right.
I, I always thought we were going to address this and I'm glad that you are.
Yep. And the financial part of that was the bigger.
Right.
Reason for my hesitation initially had to do with going further deficit spending.
We weren't dismissing the need. And, and you certainly weren't either.
Right.
So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Nope, agreed.
That we, we understood you were looking into it.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that, Joe.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else?
This is great.
No, this is awesome.
Yeah.
I think this is a very creative solution and I think it's a way to bring our community together and, you know, bartering, it works.
Yep. A little outside the box, but.
Yeah, you gotta be, given our situation. I think it's great.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to follow what Howie brought up. It's a really important point about partnering with community partners, but also making sure that we have a joint oversight, but also an opportunity to grow and build. So, not only does this provide an opportunity for us to look at working with this particular organization, but it also gives us an opportunity to be entrepreneurial about how we can grow our resources and services here by doing partnerships with community members. So, we're gonna look at it not only in terms of the SAP, but how can we do these kinds of things as we grow our opportunities for our students with flexible pathways and getting out into the community and internships and things of that nature. So, I applaud Bob. He said, it was not my idea. It was definitely his idea that we had a resource that they were interested in. And I think that's just, you know, the way that we're gonna operate.
And to help the community too, it's whatever we can do to, to make our facility available, I think, for use.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that's a good point, because I believe West River Valley Thrives was in the cafe, we think Cafe in Creamery.
They were.
Burned out. So, you know, it's a really big, right.
They burned out the street.
And ending up, right. And it was a real challenge. So, I'm glad we're able to help that out too.
Yeah, that's terrific. All right. You wanna talk a little bit about the FY 2018 budget calendar, Bob?
Yep. So, I had been left, you know, one of the things, obviously, there was one of Durin's strengths was sort of planning and detailing and laying out procedures and stuff. And she had, she had actually left a, a calendar in place for planning for the budget for FY 18, which I was blown away because I didn't do anything like that before I left Springfield. So, thanks to her. So, we took this, we took the draft that she had left and Lori Garland and Bill and I all kind of put our heads together on it and I guess Lori probably did the bulk of the work. But she came up with this document as sort of a guideline for us to start this budget planning process and to get ahead of it. Obviously, for you guys, you, you enter into it, you know, down in the early December. And some of these dates, I think she highlighted on the original, it's hard to see on this copy, but some of these are potentially still flexible, but I think depending on when dates need to be worn and all these kinds of things. But this was the proposed planning for next year's budget.
This makes sense to me. You know, this is very much like what we've seen for many years, you know. We get it early November, we have a chance to look at it, we have another meeting where we really get public comment on it, and then we, you know, have another meeting where we vote. So, we get really three looks at it before we vote and then we take it out to the community. Patty?
I have a question. Do you have information about our vision, our goals, our, I remember we, it was a while ago, but we did do an all-day thing at, up in Wyndham and, and things that we wanted the budget to reflect as our goals and budget, that drives the budget is what our goals are and stuff. And we kind of, I think, have gotten away from talking about that and we were gonna try to make sure that we talked about how we're doing with our goals based on this, that, and the other thing regularly. And I think that's kind of all.
I know where those documents are.
I have them too.
So, there's a good chance that's been given to me at one point early on on a pile of stuff, but I, I can't recall really looking at it that carefully. So, probably, I probably could appreciate another copy of that if you guys have.
I can, I can too.
And we haven't kept it in our conversations.
How, how long ago was that discussion?
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
A couple of years ago, okay. So, it might be worth.
Cause it was going like forward like 20 years.
It may very well be worth circulating to the entire board by email and putting it on as an agenda item to just sort of bring it forward.
Yeah, we were trying to develop a long-term.
It dovetails nicely with the, you know, WCSU retreat where they're really looking at their strategic plan, and we should probably too.
I think also since we have new leadership, it would be good to focus and see if things are still accurate where we wanna be.
It was a, it was a potentially 20-year.
Yeah.
Right.
What do we, what do we think Leland and Gray will utilize 20 years from now?
It was never completed, just so I can, I mean, we, we did the initial work and we never followed through.
So, we set some goals, but.
Never followed through in the way that the board had hoped we would do. So, something for the future.
Right. Yeah. And then the other piece, you know, which I think will, may or may not be part of what you're describing, but I think, I talked to you guys earlier about the physical plan and the stewardship plan that we're gonna come up with for looking at capital projects and things like that as well, which is still in the works. And we have that tour coming up this week, safety inspection. And then I'll be working with Randy and Lori to develop some, some form of a document there, which we should put on a future agenda as well, because it's, when you see the initial, like, what year one numbers could be, you might be looking for a airlift into the hospital as well. But, but it's something we should talk about, figure out like where, where, how does, where does the facility come in to where your goals are and what, what goals can you achieve with the existing facility and what improvements that you're gonna need to do in order to meet some of those goals? And if they're tied into it in that way at all, it'd be a good conversation to maybe have a parallel.
Probably. All right, I'll get that circulated.
And the facilities tour, that's Thursday at 10:30?
I have all of that.
Yeah, we just don't have the time. It's definitely Thursday.
It's 10:30.
10:30? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're gonna come to that, just come to the main office.
Okay.
How many of us are actually, how many of, how many of people are actually going on the facility tour?
I'm on the list.
I'm on the list, but I'm, I might not be able to.
You're backing away slowly.
No, she's running.
Running.
I'll be here.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I mean, just even a couple is fine. I think it's just a matter of having a couple set of eyes that when we report out on it later, you guys are like, yeah, I saw that. That's true. Just so that there's some sort of, you know, buy-in from folks around what it looked like. It's important.
Okay. All right. Good. Thanks. All right. You wanna talk about professionalism, Professional Development Days as well?
Yep. So, I mean, so, I mean, it's, I guess the most frustrating thing so far of the numerous surprises and things I've discovered coming here, I think the one that's been the most frustrating is the lack of time to work with teachers to develop them. And to put it in context, many schools throughout the state have built-in time where teachers can get together and do work in professional learning communities, on curriculum, on looking at student data, you know, on looking at instructional practices. And usually on a monthly basis, a couple of hours, a half-day, a morning, something, different schools do it different ways in different places. You know, where I'm coming from, in Springfield, they had half-days every month for staff development and they had five full days of PD during the school year. Teachers still had a 185-day contract, just that the kids only went 175 as state minimum versus. Teachers still had a 185-day contract, just that the kids only went 175, the state minimum, versus 180, which is what we do. So, when I'm arriving here, this is basically an opening day, one day to kind of get classroom set up, one PD day in January, and then a day to close up at the end. There's not a lot of, well, there's none, there's no time to sit with teachers and really talk about improving their practice. And when you think about the level of work that needs to get done simply around PBGRs, proficiency-based graduation requirements, never mind anything else, never mind looking at developing a baseline around where we are instructionally, never mind, you know, getting into really, delving into assessment work, analyzing student data. The PBGRs require, and I could do a presentation for you guys on this coming up if you don't really know what I'm talking about, but this requires schools to establish a set of proficiencies that students have to demonstrate that they're proficient in before they can graduate. And there's a collection of areas. We've moved away from the Carnegie units where it's like four credits of English, three credits of math. We've moved away from that at the state level, starting with the sophomore class. And we've said that you have to be proficient in, and they've left it there. And so, local, which means us, agencies have to figure out what it means to be proficient, and in what areas do we want our kids to be proficient in order to graduate. State gives us the guidelines around, you know, there's communication, ELA, and there's math. But as far as like what that looks like and what it means and how it's defined is not done by the state. And they're expecting, I mentioned that board policy, I think I mentioned that, maybe it was just in a conversation with Joe, that there's a board policy missing that is supposed to set those expectations for this class. Now, this class graduates in a couple of years, and we haven't even started really doing the work here to determine how we're measuring whether or not they graduate. So, I know that's like a giant paradigm shift around how we're thinking about it. Again, I can give you more detail at another meeting. But basically, I spent last year at Springfield High School, every half-day, every, we have Tuesday staff meetings, an hour a week of those, and the vast majority of the other five PD days, letting teachers, training them on how to do it, and then letting them do the work of developing those proficiencies for the entire year. We did not finish the freshman curriculum. All right? This is a ton of work. It's a ton of work. And right now, we have an hour a week of faculty meeting time to do it. Nor do I have the training in place yet to do it. The training piece, I'm working with Jen, central office, to get that going, get organized, but I don't have the time for them to do the work. So, what I'm asking for from you guys is to consider altering or allowing me to alter the school calendar in some way that builds some time in this year based on what we already have in place. And then when the super tenants discuss in the spring or winter, when they start talking about their, but their calendar for the following year, to have your input and your approval to consider doing some more time as we go. When you think about, the only time that teachers can get developed professionally is when they leave their classroom, get higher sub, and go to a conference, or take something in the summer. There's nothing that's built in for us to do that work with them while we own them, which is during the contractual time. So, I'm a big believer in while we own them, let's get them in a room, let's give them some training, let's put them together, make them work. And there's a ton of stuff that needs to get done. So, what I was proposing, I mean, I'll pretty much take anything you're going to be willing to give me. But what I'm proposing is if I could do two, two half-days in the fall and two in the spring, that would be a huge starting place. If folks have concerns about how the half-days work, you know, some, some communities don't like to do that because of busing limitations. And I haven't even explored the busing limitations here yet because I know it comes from different towns. So, it's complicated. So, I haven't explored that yet. And usually, it's not a big deal with older kids around daycare and those kinds of issues. But that sometimes can be, can ruffle feathers. Or the alternative would be to do a couple of full-days here and there. The advantage of the half-days would be that they're still kind of student days, and we're not losing any student days. But really, it's the same amount of time either way you do it, full days or half-days. So, that's, that's sort of my pitch. I don't have any days picked. I mean, I was sort of waiting to see what you guys felt about the idea. We'd basically be shortening potentially the student count of days in order to get teachers additional training and allow them to do the work to do this. And again, I could come back and present to you on what the nature of that work is. I think you'll agree that it's a ton of work that we're going to expect these guys to do. So, we need to give them the time to do it. It's much more cost-efficient than trying to get them to do it above and beyond the contractual time, obviously.
So, do I understand correctly, every high school in the state now has to come up with their own proficiency standards? There's no statewide, off-the-shelf-
The categories have been defined. Yep.
And so, and the cost of this, we will take out of our student learning time because, once again, the state has not funded the mandate that they have passed down to us.
Right. I mean, yes, and I get where you're coming from on that, and yes, I don't want to disagree with that. Yes, it's coming out of somewhere, all right? The flip side of that, I would argue though, is that if the learning experiences could be better and could be improved upon by getting more development and really looking at what you're doing and determining how, which standards you're going to pick that really measure, how are you going to measure those and what's that look like? And it might provide, you know, the multiple pathways piece, you'll get different ways of understanding how you meet those things. You end up with a significantly more improved educational experience after. So, yeah, you lose a little time on the front end, but hopefully, you end up with a much richer experience for kids in the back end. So, yeah, it's a give, it's a give-to-get. But I hear what you're saying.
I support, you know, whatever you feel that teachers need to meet the state's standards. But Emily, I mean, when you go to the State House, people, they, Montpelier needs to be aware of what they're doing with these mandates. This is crazy that they keep asking us to do more stuff for the kids and cutting our budgets down. So, where does this come from? Now, it's coming from student learning time. So, yeah, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. But I think it's really crazy that there's not a statewide standard that we can't pull off the shelf and say, "These are the standards that a kid needs to graduate high school in Vermont," and that every high school is going to have their own standards.
And I think the reason the AOE didn't do that is because it's Vermont. In other states, that, you know, some states just dictate this is what it's going to be, and here's, here's the test, and here's what you're going to do, and we're going on Tuesday at 3 o'clock, this is what, you know what I mean? Like that kind of regimentation.
There are parameters.
There are parameters. It's not just wide open. But Vermont's such a local-controlled state that they didn't dare dictate, I think, to each community of what they, what they valued around how, how they were going to measure those areas and those proficiency levels. And I think the second piece is the AOE doesn't have the internal capacity to do that because they're not funded sufficiently to have people in place to do that work. So, I think, I think it's a double, double impact there for us. But I mean, my experience and my belief is that the teachers are going to be more tuned into it anyways if they're the ones doing the work. And when they're more tuned into it, the kids are going to get a better experience on the backside. So, I think it's better for kids, and fundamentally, it's the right thing to do, but yes, there's a cost.
An educator is kind of dragging this out. My first reaction was Howie's, "You got to be kidding me. They can't just figure this out for us." But my second reaction was that by doing the work, you become more invested in what it is that you're using. And we're asking teachers to stop grading students. Like, we're asking them to stop putting numbers or letters on students and have that be who they are. And that's a huge sea change in the work. And to get teachers to buy into that even still is, having done it for, like, I work up in the Green Mountain, True River School District, and where sixth grader are kind of overlapping to their middle school work now. It's a lot of work, and I think the teacher buying is really important and have them be invested in that work to understand what it is. Because just for them to understand how it's going to change their role is really important. And I would just say, similar-sized school, they did once a month half-days last year. Didn't come even close to getting where they should be. I mean, I would, personally, I would say you should be asking for a half-day a month, not, I would ask for more time. Or I would, I would be willing to support more time, having seen it. And I know, because we're doing once a month again up there this year for half-days.
Yeah, two, I would think two, each semester is what I was thinking. But because by the time we really would get it rolling out, it would probably be October, November anyways. But, and I think that's, and I agree, I think that's where we would want to go next year. I think that's more in keeping with what most every place is doing. Because there's, you know, like I said, I don't know how far they've got with their work, but we didn't even finish the freshman curriculum.
End it on the top, I mean, like, it's really easy to hash out, you get the stuff that's more, it's not so concrete. It becomes a very large conversation, so.
And some of the standards that have been used, like the PE and health standards, just were adopted last year. So, whatever work people had done prior to that, they do address the new standards anyway. So, there's a lot of, sometimes there's the shifting of that that shifts how you have to do that work. And I think, and Emily, you're right that this is a much, it's a broader thing. It's not as ill-defined as maybe I even made it sound. But I think if you guys want, I can do just a 10, 15-minute thing at the next meeting just to explain what it is so that folks have an understanding. I'll be doing the same thing with the staff here. So, because I don't think there's been a lot of work in that area here. So, I think that's something that I can do for you guys as well, just a quick slideshow so you get a sense of what it is. Because it is a giant paradigm shift for teachers, and it goes away from the traditional structure in pretty much every way. Or it can. It doesn't have to, but it can.
Emily, you got a comment?
Yeah. So, it's a giant paradigm shift for families too, and I think that that's, and colleges, and this is a big deal.
Yes.
And I don't, you know, I'm not arguing with anything Howie said at all. I mean, it's, it's the nature of every department of their service agency. It's just we're underfunded. It's that simple. So, but I do think that it's a good direction for us to go. I think there've been some things thrown in the way. ESSA is one, you know? There was work going forward on accountability that has sort of been, everything's had to be hauled back a little bit because of ESSA passing. So, there's a lot of reasons for this. But I think that this is the right thing to do. I want to make sure that we understand what you're really asking for. We have a contract that states how many student days, we know how many are required by state, but we have a contract that states how many kids, student days there are and how many staff days there are. And you're asking for a shift, for permission from this board to shift that contractual requirement for this one year. Is that correct? And just, I want to make it, I want to get it clarified.
Yeah, I guess, so I guess if I'm, if it does specify teacher days and student days, it's going to be different than, we wouldn't have the authority to do that unilaterally, I guess. Half-days would be the solution though, because those are still student days.
Well, we make changes occasionally to this student year because of snow days or whatever. We will, there are times when there are less days, even staff days. So, I'm not, you know, what I guess I'm trying to get at is you're asking for a shift this year. And it's pretty significant because over the years, we've been increasing student days over the last number of years.
Sure.
A lot of years. We haven't increased them in a long time, but we've reached that point for a reason.
Right.
But times change. And I think it's, I think one of the things that we haven't done well enough in this state, and I, you know, the more I get involved with education, the more it concerns me that we are not supporting our staff in the way that we need to in that, what I mean by supporting them in their professional learning. And I'd really support you moving forward with this. I wish it were around a more broad reason than just this big change because I think that we should be doing more professional learning anyways. And then maybe get out of the way a little bit.
Well, I think that, I mean, you could make the argument that it's a top-down directive from the AOE and just, well, we have to check the box and go through the steps. But really, fundamentally, it's really a better way to approach education.
Exactly.
And that's why I would push to do it, not because it's a mandate of EQS. That being said, I think that you're right. We do need to provide the opportunity for teachers to know how to do that and understand what that looks like, and whether it's going to trainings or having trainers come to us. We're just working together, collectively putting our brains together to kind of figure out the problem. It's, it's super important. And the thing that's, and when you come up with the student days, the piece that, that this whole conceptually addresses is seat time. Carnegie units is based on this concept of seat time.
Yeah.
So, to argue that we should keep the number of seat days the same while we're exploring a conceptual thing that doesn't value seat time is antithetical. It's-
Exactly. That's sort of what I'm trying to get at. I think this seems like an opportunity for us to take a look at how we operate.
Right.
Totally.
Right.
You know? And so, I hope that as you're moving forward with this first request, that this is sort of a precursor to what, as you've sort of worked your way into the job you're doing here, of maybe even looking at the contractual piece of it as well. Because I think it's just really important. This is really important stuff we're doing. Everything's changing right now.
Very clearly.
Kelly, you have something?
No, I'm good.
Howie? Just want to say, so this is, this is huge in terms of how our school is going to be perceived to the outside world. We can set rigorous standards here, we can set loose standards. And this is going to profoundly affect, you know, our kids getting into college and their futures. So, I'll be very interested in seeing what's proposed.
Yeah, the key is we get to the final.
Yeah, I agree. How does that affect a kid who goes to a school that has these standards? Can't get into college because his school standards aren't perceived as lax.
And schools develop reputations-
Right, absolutely.
-around what it is, what kind of school it is. And it's, you know, I think it's important for us to have one that's really strong.
That's right. We already have a top, a middle school, a top, a middle.
But built into that is, is the standards are high, but, but there's flexibility in how to achieve them. That's, that's the key so that it's, so that every kid can achieve them. You're not, you're not making rigor for rigor's sake to keep kids away from getting a diploma. You're making rigor at the level it needs to be at to make citizens, you know? But the ways that you get there are varied and flexible. And that's the whole, that's the work the teachers will be doing, is determining what it looks like to achieve that standard.
Can you make a motion?
I, I don't know. I guess, I mean, probably, yeah.
I think you should.
Go ahead, Bill.
Are you sure that's your ask?
Well, I mean, ask for it if that's what you want.
I think we should make a motion that's flexible to allow him to come to-
Yeah, I would just, I would advocate for flexibility in your, your leader. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the administration to adjust student days as necessary to provide professional development for the staff.
Second.
We move to authorize the administration to adjust student days as necessary for professional development for the staff. State guidelines.
Patty seconded.
Well, there's limits around the busing piece to figure out.
All right. Now, we've got a motion. Any discussion or further discussion on that?
Can I just ask, you offered to come to us with more of this down the road. And I'm not suggesting, you know, your schedule, it has to work with your schedule, but I would love to have a meeting where we have a conversation around where we're headed at some point when you, when you can.
Yep, and I can start small by just explaining for the non-educators in the room what the hell we were just talking about. That you start, right? And then we can go from there?
We, as a board, make questions about this.
Well, you're going to get questions about it, particularly as described, going away from, anytime you go away from something that's been in place for 100 years.
Around valedictorian.
Right, valedictorians, last rank.
Parents will want to know why we're doing this, and we need to make sure.
And the places where it's failed miserably, well, the costumes failed miserably from the public relations eye, places like up at Stevens High School in Claremont, New Hampshire. I got a letter from a random parent in Claremont sent to me while I was in Springfield that said, "Don't do this. It's awful, blah, blah." So, I called over to find out like what happened, and the administration just admitted like, "We didn't really talk to parents about it. We just like rolled it out, and it was like, this is what we're doing." And we kind of took the ivory tower approach, that this is what's best, and this is what we're doing. So, here it lands. And it was like, and the parents were just like, "Whoa, whoa, where's this coming?" They didn't do any sort of PR with families about it, or kids. I mean, he said, "Here, he has no idea what the heck I'm talking about either," probably, right? Yeah, see? So, I need to do this, I need to do this work with the kids as well as the staff and with you guys, and then eventually, we take it out to the parents.
But my concern was around parents even questioning why we're reducing the number of student days.
Oh, that part, yeah, right, right.
I do think it's really important to note that that's going to be a pushback.
That'll bring, that'll bring notice.
Oh, yeah, so I would hope that-
Well, maybe we can craft some kind of press release that talks about it, the days, the specific days that are selected and why, and the work that the teachers are going to be doing, and give some background and have that all be part of the-
It's important.
If their half-day doesn't technically cut their number of school days, it's the number of school hours.
Right.
But we didn't, that's why that's in our motion.
Right.
Right, that's true.
So, we don't know what's going on.
And parents will still want to know why their student is only in school half-day.
Instead of 182 or something.
Yep, they'll, they'll be thinking, "Oh, the teachers, you know, what are the teachers doing to all my students?" Yeah.
And I did, and I mean, for the record, this was in place here when I taught here. This, this isn't something that's new to this area either. When I taught here, we had half-day PD days. I don't know that it was one a month. I don't, I mean, I can't remember. It was a while ago, but we did have them.
We still have that October time where there was-
Yeah, they don't do the state convention anymore because no one ever went to them. But I would, can I just say one more thing about this? I would, before we vote, I hope that this is a conversation that even though I know it's really focused at Leland Gray right now, and we're not asking this, I hope this conversation, and I sort of talked to you, Bill, too, about this, is going to be happening from the pre-K 12 level so that we can align some of this PD. Because I know, you know, Dover already has more professional development. you know, Dover already has more professional development, I believe, days than other school districts. So I, again, I think it's important we stay involved at a pre-K 12 education system here, and that, you know, I mean, we may be four to one at some point.
Well, the flagship will lead the way.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I would add, the way Common Core is straddling sixth grade now, you kind of have to get the, like, because that's where I'm at. The sixth-grade teachers have to be working with middle school teachers to make that transition work, so you're going to have to get teachers from the, which is great, actually, time for us to be able to work with the teachers that we send to.
That's great.
But that, in your district, is a great, you know, it's a reason and a rationale to have them be on the same days in the long term.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
All right, so you'd stop.
Yes. All right, anybody else? All right, so.
We have a motion.
What, yeah, we have a motion. I just, I was going to try and recite it, and I can't.
Well, it's something like, authorize the administration to adjust student days as necessary to facilitate professional development.
Thank you, Peter. So all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, have, have, any abstainers?
Probably.
All right, motion carries. Thank you all. All right.
Can I just, I want to ask Bob one last question?
Sure.
Is, are there any other surprises or frustrations that you care to share with us?
Well, the budget deficit piece was the first one, which you guys have already been briefed on in July, and then again in August. The, there's another, another one of Bill's, I think, talk about in executive session. So there's been, there's been a couple of road, you know, speed bumps along the way, but I don't want that to take away from the overall experience, it's just, I, I think when you start any, any new position, you're always finding things, and whether it's a different set of eyes, or whether it's just, you know, the hand grenade with the pin pulled out, there's just a way to go out. It's just, I think it happens in any, in any profession, probably, in any, in any shift of position, so I'm sure I left a few for my, you know, person down in Springfield, too. So, nothing that's, nothing that's catastrophic, just, you know, lots of little things here and there. But we're working through them, and I think that, you know, the staff and I have had a great start to the year. We worked on, you know, staff meeting norms, just to kind of, we're on the same page as how we're going to do run our staff meetings, and it was, you know, universally agreed upon, and, you know, we're there, I think, feeling good about where we're at, and just trying to keep, get morale to continue to improve, and, you know, I'm going to hit them with some work soon, so. So, yeah, no, but I, I mean, more will come, I think, I'll fill you in as they come, but I think you'll get another one today in executive session.
Okay. All right, next is bills and pay orders. They've been reviewed?
They have.
Ready to go?
We're ready to go.
All right, you want to give me the sheet?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And it won't have any scribblings on it?
This is awesome.
It didn't have to recalculate?
All right, so we have four warrants totaling $200,949.38, and four payrolls totaling $289,612.66, for a grand total of $490,562.4. So I just need a motion to approve those.
Make a motion, we approve bills and pay orders. Second.
All right, so it's been moved and approved. Any discussion on this at all? You guys reviewed them, they're all in order? Nothing? All right, so it's been moved to approve bills and pay orders in the amount of $490,562.4. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Peter, I'll give you the sheet afterwards. Under other here, I just had a quick note, are you ready for a policy committee meeting next month to talk about some of the holes, or do you not need one yet?
I think it's worth seeing, John, just to go over the overall scope and sequence of where we're at.
Okay.
And I'll, yeah, it doesn't need to be super long, but just to kind of get a sense of.
Thank you.
Where we're at.
I skipped over the consent agenda.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Which is the minutes of August 9.
Right. All right.
Kelly.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Sorry. Okay, so, we have a request for a policy committee meeting next month.
Do we have a policy committee?
Yes.
Yes, you're on it.
Yes, you're on it, Patty's on it, Twyla's on it.
Congratulations.
Oh, my God. I think I'm still on it.
Yeah, you, Twyla.
Allison.
And Ally, and Kelly. We're the four policy committees.
No.
And, and you're going to have to figure out who's the chair, because there isn't one.
You are the chair for the WCSU.
No. Did you have a last board meeting? I completely was here, and I missed it.
You are. You can go watch it on TV, that's what I did.
Okay, so, we know who the policy committee, we know who the policy committee is.
Outside on that night.
But as far as the policy policy committee that is the foremost, that doesn't have a chair.
Oh, that was the one that doesn't need chair.
Right, that was the one.
Right, right.
See, oh, it's all coming back to her now.
Okay, so anyway, there, we'll have a policy committee meeting, it'll be 6:30, and you can think, you know who you are, and you can figure out chair. It's not a lot of responsibility.
I forgot that one, okay.
Okay, any other, anything else under other we need to do? Patty?
I have a question. Where are we with, are we in a NIASC-type year, or does that happen?
We don't have that.
Because we don't do that anymore. I know that, but I just want to make sure that you guys know about it.
Did you really want to go into this tonight?
Do you really want to do this right now?
Well, no, I just was like, it just came to mind when we were talking about that, the other thing, and I said now to myself, I wonder where our co-schools that, that look at us and say where they're at with this.
So there were three schools in the cohort that did this program. Two of them, including us, have new principals.
Oh.
As does Mill River. And the other one was.
Honor Valley.
From what I understand, in my communication with a couple of folks, is that Durin was really the one that made that happen.
Oh, okay.
So, with her not in the picture, and another new principal at, at Mill River, I don't know that that's going to hold. The follow-up to that is, I don't know the backstory of why the district left NIASC. I would like to learn more about that. NIASC has already reached out, they know me for my work in Springfield, and I presented some of the work we had done in Springfield at their Model Schools Convention one year. They are eager to have a conversation with me and Bill and Jen a little bit about possibly reconsidering and rejoining. So whatever background I can get around, the decision to leave, and try to understand what that decision was based on, that would be good for me, because I come from a place where it's vital importance to a school, to any institution, to force a level of reflection and adhere to a certain level of standards that is put forth by some accrediting group. It's not the end-all, be-all, it can be a little costly, but I think they're streamlining their approach now and how, how they do reaccreditation.
That's right.
And I think that, you know, I would like to at least explore what that looks like, and gather the reasons as to why we departed, and then maybe have a community discussion around that.
There's a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion. Emily has the, Emily has the answer.
Emily has the answer?
I don't have an answer, but I, but I will tell you that a couple of things, one is that I hope you're going to talk to your staff about it, because a lot of that conversation happened there. We took six months to make that decision, and so during that, I can't pull out of the top of my head the dates of that now, but it was a year and a half at least ago, if not more, where we made that decision. We've been through one process, so, I, you know, you can look at minutes, and there were, there were supporting documents. If Joe can't get them for you, I can, I got all of that. I mean, there were, there was a lot of research done. I will say, you just hit the nail on the head. Part of it had to do, and probably a substantial part, it had to do with the cost and the value for the cost. And so that's where I would suggest you go to the staff and talk to them about the value as well. I also want to follow up on something you just said. NIASC has been undergoing their own changes. And so between the time where we heard all that information from Durin and the staff and the conversations we had, I think there've been some changes. So I, I hope that you will look into it, because it is critically important that we're accredited in some way. We, we need to be. And so.
Ironically, it was the year that we were presenting at their Model Schools Conference, I think, probably was, it was two years ago now, I think, is probably when you guys were discussing it. Because I, or your decision had just been made, because I was talking with George Edwards, who's the director of the Secondary Schools Commission, pardon me, ask, and had mentioned to him about, I said, "Oh," I said, "my kid's school just left." So what's, what's that about? And his thing is, "Yeah, we got to figure out ways to make this better." And then, in subsequent months, through work that Springfield had been doing, he got back to me and said, "You know, one of the things that we've done is shrinking the size of the visiting team," which was a huge piece of the cost, because you're going to put them all up for four days, so they're shrinking the size of the team, they're doing a lot more stuff with online document storage. I mean, then they're going to come up with ways, creative ways to, rather than having every 10 years, you have this bulk of money you have to pay out, of paying some overtime so you can budget for it more effectively, and in fact, they hold an escrow money, and then they use that to help pay for the visit. I mean, there's different things that they're doing to try to.
The cost wasn't only that. The cost was to staff, you know, staff time and the amount of effort to do that happens there on all the committees that have.
Of course, right.